Call this work session into order June first, two thousand and twenty-two, six o'clock. Jason, would you have the application card?
Yes, sir. Right. Father, I thank you, and I as always, to your grace, for your mercy, I love the Chief Sean Flores. I pray God will reach out to you as you grant your wisdom, your knowledge, and your understanding to work through issues of town, business of town, and we're taking that really individually from the Lord's glory, in the benefit of the local board, and you know what, right?
Stand up again, for the praise.
A place of peace, to the Father, in the United States of America, and to the Father, for which saints, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, and justice for all.
Okay. Do I have a motion for approval of the agenda?
I move.
Okay, we have a motion, and so, all those in favor? District one?
Yes.
District two, yes. District three, district four?
Yes.
Five, six, seven?
Yep.
Eight?
Yep.
And that's over, okay. Now turning it over to our city manager to make the presentation, discuss the discussion.
Real, real quick, if I may, Jay, for notes, since Judy is not here today, just a quick update, she can't retreat, and she's not feeling well right now, so she's not here tonight. So, um, Jay will be taking some notes tonight, and he and I will tackle these minutes. Um, who made the motion on approval of the agenda?
I'm the one.
Second? It's Johnny May? Okay. Um, and everyone was in favor?
Yes.
All right, cool. Um, just so Jay could get rid of down. All right, so we're here tonight, um, I sent out the, the ninety-something page budget, about a week ago, for everybody to start their viewing, uh, just as we do every year, want to come together tonight. Um, I'm just gonna run through the, the highlight, those, those bigger changes within the budget. You certainly have all the line items to look at within each of the budgets, but tonight's about hitting the highlights and the overview of the budget, and then it's open for any discussion that, that council may wish to have. So with that, to begin, I want to start by, um, going back through the annual action items that, that were discussed at the work session not too long ago. Uh, the first one was to try and provide at least a three percent cost of living pay increase for each employee of the town. The second one was to continue with the second allotment of premium pay this year, once we receive that in October, November timeframe. The other one was hiring a full-time IT employee, that certainly would be used with the ARP funds. Um, perform a hotel analysis study for recruitment efforts, finalize our wastewater treatment plant recruitment projects, continue with the water project progress, and to receive RAP, RFQs for automated metering system, and determine what funding mechanism we would need to look at that based on the, the fits or RAP, RFQs. Finalize engineering and design for both town lawn parks, my understanding is that's getting very close to being done. Uh, bid and construct new town entrance signage, finalize engineering design for, for downtown districts, I was talking with Rick last week on that, he said those are about fifty percent done at this point. Finalize engineering and design for Water Unity Park, we had actually funded that in this current fiscal year, but one is we, just with all the other engineering and design that's been going on, that's just kind of been pushed and pushed, so we refunded that in this year's budget, um, in the hospitality tax budget. Hire a part-time marketing and events coordinator, those were all the items that, that we had discussed at the work session not long ago. Next thing I want to do is talk about some of the across-the-board changes budget-wide, whether it's general fund, utility fund, whatever the case may be, these were some of the challenges and, and things that affected across the board. Uh, the first one, uh, going back to annual action item, um, all employees of the town within the budget you received, um, that includes a three percent cost of living for, for all employees. But what we did not expect this year was number two, um, an eighteen point one percent increase in the state health premiums on the employer portion. Um, I will tell you, for about ten years leading up to, all right, let me restate that, since two thousand and fifteen, when we got on the state health plan, we have increased about four percent up until this year, and we got hit with eighteen point one percent this year. All in all, that was about a sixty-three thousand dollars increase in, in the employer contribution across the board of what we have to pay. Um, this is having a huge impact on a lot of other cities, there are cities that hit for two, three, and four hundred thousand dollars in this year's budget, but yes. Um, if you ask the reason, they say no. That's their stated reason was coming, for the eighteen point one percent increase. So, that certainly presented to be a challenge in this year's budget. Now, I will say, despite that eighteen point one percent increase before we went to state budget, we were seeing almost thirty percent increases on an annual basis every year. So, it, it might stink, but it's still better than what people that are in private insurance are taking right now, which is higher.
It did not raise for two years though, right?
I think we had half a percent, um...
Right.
One year, one or two years, but like I told them, I think right before you came in, was from two thousand and fifteen, no, from two thousand and fifteen up until this year, we had only increased about four percent total, of my bad. Um, once again, this year, we had the one percent increase in, in state retirement on the employer portion. This year, we had increases across the board on workers' compensation. Um, I think that was just rate increases, not, not due to any kind of modifier based on our usage, because we've not had a lot of workers' comp claims. Um, that was just a general increase to workers' comp. Uh, the liability property and vehicle insurance rates, I will tell you, the sum of that is due to modifier increase, um, just based on claims that, that we've had, they go back three years on your claim history. Um, but we also had property appraisal done last year, which increased a lot of our property, uh, stuff, because certainly the wastewater plant saw a huge increase due to the improvements that have been made out there. Um, our vehicle insurance rates have obviously gone up because we've replaced a lot of vehicles with newer vehicles. Rises in fuel cost and inflation, um, you know, that's so hard, as we went through the budget, that's so hard to, to project. Um, but we had to look at those areas where we've seen the most impact at this point, and chemical costs and, and fuel increases are, are among the top in what we've seen on that, and utility side supplies. And all of the discussed annual action items that we talked about in our workshop are included in this budget and are a part of this budget. And what I will say is, um, it's a part of this budget without any staff recommendation for tax increase, any kind of fees or, or charges of the town, outside of the current sanitation rate increase that we're doing, um, that we've had first reading on, we've not proposed any other type of increase in this budget. So, to begin, um, you will notice, we are typically around eight million something in our total overall budget, um, eight to nine million dollars. You will notice that this year's budget is eleven million, three hundred and fifty-seven thousand, six hundred and thirty-five. That is mostly in part the increase due to the American Rescue Plan, um, budget that we've, that we're doing for this coming year of two million, one hundred and eighty-nine thousand, three hundred and eighty-four dollars. Uh, you will see that the general funds, five million, two hundred and fourteen thousand, six hundred and fifty-one, enterprise staying close to around the same at three million, three hundred and twenty-one thousand, hospitality tax fund, uh, we were able to bump that up to about six hundred and twenty-five thousand, we're on track this year to do six hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars, but we've set next year's budget at about six hundred and twenty-five thousand. Can y'all see that?
It seems a little blurry.
A little blurry.
I thought it seemed a little blurry, too, let me see, is there an unblurred thing on here?
Um, on the actual lens part.
On the lens?
Well, I think it's up front.
I thought it looked a little blurry, mate, too.
Mayor, would you like to comment?
Yeah, sorry. I apologize for, for being...
No, that doesn't round.
Took a business partner to the airport, and then I hung up with...
Oh, here it goes.
Hung up with the ticket holder.
All right, that should be a little clearer for you.
Still there, are you like...
Yes. All right.
I'm good for something.
All right, so just a quick breakdown of, of the percentage of budget by department, or about, by budget or department. Uh, you will notice our two largest in the overall budget are ARP's fifteen percent, with the police department at twenty percent of the overall budget, uh, H-Tax being about six percent, um, and so forth. So moving into the general fund budget, um, you will notice that, which all of you should have seen this when looking through the budget, again, five billion, two hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. When we talk about the revenues, we were able to increase property and vehicle taxes together by about fifty-nine thousand dollars this year, um, based on where we're at and what we're left to bring in, in this final month. We are higher, like, just our increased profit taxes, we are already over what we budgeted, um, for this current year, and we're not set to have another reassessment for about another three years, I think, at this point, I think we've been in the current one for two years. Uh, we were able to increase our business license revenue by fifty-five thousand dollars, um, just based on where we're at and what we project to have left coming in. Uh, four hundred and twenty-seven thousand, five hundred is in the revenue for the general fund this year, and that is a transfer from the American Rescue Plan budget into the general fund. Uh, the reason we have to do that is the, the American Rescue Plan funds, so the infiltration inflow improvements that, that we've budgeted for, um, that can be paid directly from the American Rescue Plan funds. Um, the new, I'm trying to remember the stuff, the IT and the fire truck cannot be paid directly from the American Rescue Plan funds, but it is allowed to be transferred to your general fund under the current law to, to, so we'll make those expenses out of the general fund, so we're showing the revenue coming in for IT and the new fire truck. And our safer grant that we've had for the, the fire instructor at the high school, um, has run out, the current budget we are in now was the final year of that, and we'll talk a little bit more about the plan for that as we move forward in the presentation. Uh, our fines, forfeitures, and state fines, um, we were able to increase that about eighteen thousand dollars. Once court got back into full swing post-COVID, able to get things done, the past four or five months, we have seen what was that normal revenue that we were used to coming in, and I think we're back on track again, when we don't have any other, um, any other hiccups in court or pandemics to deal with. Our E nine-one line item decreased by forty-seven thousand due to the purchase, this past year we had new equipment that we needed to install, that we had budgeted for, um, so we were, we had to reduce that line item down for this coming year. Administration, um, again, most of many of the changes that you're gonna see in administration budget are related to three percent cost of living, the retirement, the health increases that we've discussed already. Uh, it's within the administration budget that you will see the fifteen thousand dollars for the hotel analysis study, um, within this budget. The fire department budget, again, the three percent, uh, one thing I do want to note about this is, you will see the salary and wages line item is lower in the proposed budget than what it was for this current year, but it does include the three percent cost of living. Uh, the reason for that, like I mentioned, the school district called us about a month ago, month and a half ago, and told us they wanted to meet about the fire program. Uh, we went, and quite frankly, the interest is low, they didn't have the numbers to justify continuing with the program. Uh, we had hoped they would, we'd certainly tried to advocate for continuing, um, with a fifty-fifty partnership in that program, but they said we're done. So with that, that now put a hundred percent of it on our shoulders, we're talking with Chief Ryan, um, Jay, myself, um, we ultimately decided that, um, we felt the best use of those funds were going to be to, to move it from being a fire instructor position at the high school and all of that, to creating another full-time firefighter position, um, that is set up more on a Monday through Friday, eight-to-five type schedule, covering the peak days, peak hours, having one person in the Batesburg station, one in the Leesville station, and in doing that, it certainly reduced the salary of that position down to what the full-time firefighters paid versus what the fire instructors, so that's why you see it budgeted lower than last year.
I'm sorry, could you clarify that for me now? Basically, the school district was paying a portion, obviously, the safe grant covered first three months of the year or something?
Well, up until...
Ran out in September?
Up until this current year that we're in, the safer grant paid a hundred percent of all of it.
Then started, and it ended in September?
Right, so we had a portion of this year that needed to be split...
How much of that was the school district that did?
We had split that fifty-fifty between the school district and the town.
Okay, so essentially, um, how much was that? Do you have an idea?
About twenty.
You're adding money, and you're adding a position, and what do I tell my constituents? We're adding a position, we have increased fire calls, we have increased activity in the department, uh, what, what justifies the actual addition of an additional person? And we're creating a new position, which I, I'd like to see the job description, since we are actually creating a new position?
Well, it'll be a full-time, it'll be a full-time firefighter description.
Same way as the, the council creates and, creates and, uh, takes away positions.
Council?
Council creates through the approval of the budget, and that would be it.
It's true approval of the budget, it's the same with concurrent of the town manager.
I would disagree.
Well, so...
It's through the approval of the budget, if the manager brings us the budget.
Typically, typically, the, the budget, there is funding for X number of positions, if council feels they wish to cut a position, it would be done through the budget process is where that would be done. Uh, council can't come in mid-year and say, you need the fire this person, we're doing away from that position. It would be, it would be funded, either funded or not funded, within the budget, and that approval is the deciding factor of hiring them.
I thought the presentation by the fire department, you know, the year-end stuff, was pretty clear, that this help volume has been just going crazy over the past, what, eight years, and it's really increased a lot, so...
It has, um, and, and again, that all goes back to when we had the discussion, because that was my approach going into it, was saying we'd reallocate these funds towards other needs within the budget, and there was a pretty strong consensus from, from Chief Ryan and Jay and that, that whoa, 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 we, we really need to get a staff person at the Batesburg station and one at the Leesville station, A, that'll cut down response times that we have on the Batesburg side of town, which are higher than what we have on the Leesville side of town. The increased call volume, and one thing to keep in mind, when you talk about ISO, which is the rating system for, for insurance, um, it takes three volunteer firefighters to equal one paid person on the fire scene. And if there's one area that we're low in our rating for ISO, and that we lack the points in our ISO calculations, it's on number of people on the fire scene, because it would take three fire, volunteer firefighters to be on that scene to equal one paid.
The ISO is a voluntary rating system, and various, my understanding from local insurance agencies, various, so, has no bearing on insurance rates?
Well, I'm sorry, I was, Dave was asking a question, what was that question?
The ISO is a voluntary participation rating agency?
The most insurance companies, uh, purchase their information, um, I mean, I don't know of any department that declines to use or participate, uh, they...
Okay, so you're saying all departments, although it's voluntary, all departments?
Yeah, and, and every department I know of has to participate on some level.
And every department sets their own objective as to what rating they're trying to achieve?
Well, the, the rating is set forth as fifty percent is grading the fire department, forty percent is the water system, and ten percent is communication, they've got their grading scale, and they'll come in and, and evaluate your department, your water system, and the communications, so their, their scoring is independent upon our goal, it's irrelevant, and it's only looking at structure fires, they're not looking at medical calls and, and the other.
Okay, so we score for, uh, what happens? Or for an odd grade?
Well, then the, uh, property owners, your homeowner's insurance would go up, you, well, it could potentially go up, I should say, it's up to the insurance, your insurance companies, and I don't, I don't know who all uses it, but I know that there are insurance companies that, they purchase that data from ISO, and then they adjust your insurance rating accordingly.
Again, and, and as a part of our proposed budget, it is our recommendation, recommendation to, to maintain that, just moving it from the fire instructor into a full-time firefighter position, um, this position being more structurally set up as primarily eight-to-five, Monday through Friday, your peak times, peak hours, peak responses, but what they will also do is if any of the full-time firefighters are taking vacation, their shift can be altered to, to cover those shifts while they're on vacation, those twenty-four-hour shifts.
And this will have no impact on your overtime budget?
Uh, so we actually, um, that was one of the discussions, is that our goal is, is that this will reduce the overtime budget within the fire department.
But you did not do that in this proposal.
Right, because, and, and again, as pay goes up, overtime, there's built-in overtime to begin with, within the fire department, um, so you've got some of that, but as pay goes up, any built-in overtime is gonna increase the overtime line item.
Just question.
We, well, we had actually increased the overtime line item more in, in making this decision to do this, we had actually pulled it back down, but it's still reflecting an increase. Um, one thing that we had change in the fire department this year was, uh, the, the, uh, fire department was under an old Time Warner Spectrum, um, internet plan that, quite frankly, had been grandfathered for a long time, uh, we were forestated that this year. Uh, the good thing is, we have a lot more internet speed and capability within our fire stations than what we previously had, and I think Jay could tell you it was pretty, pretty crappy at best. Um, we were able to, we were kind of forced to upgrade our business class internet at both stations, um, but in doing that, that was about a three thousand dollar annual increase in what we had, we kind of had a sweetheart bill for, um, but they were no longer gonna allow us to stay on that.
Sweetheart price-wise, but the slow internet speed and bandwidth.
Right, we had the sweetheart pricing, but we had very low internet speeds. Um, and it, the capital line item within the fire department budget is where you will notice, uh, we had three hundred and fifteen thousand, five hundred dollars for the fire truck budgeted. Um, I will go ahead and tell you, we are budgeting in for this year, but it is likely not to be spent, and that's fifty percent, we've already paid a fifty percent deposit. Um, I highly doubt in this budget we will actually spend that three hundred and fifteen thousand, five hundred, just due to delivery, kind of expected to be two years, but we wanted to go ahead and have it in the budget in case some miracle happens and they get there faster.
How did that six hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars cost compared to the original projection?
Uh, well, we had come to y'all about budgeting six hundred and fifty thousand, and it was right, it was six...
Six forty.
It was, well, it was originally six forty-nine, but by paying the fifty percent deposit upfront, they knocked another nine thousand off, so six forty is about where it came in on the fire truck. Now, six, six forty and some change was the total overall cost of the fire truck.
Yep, but if we paid half of six fifty, we paid...
Well, no, all right, so, so half, the half was...
Three fifty each.
So that, the half...
I'm sorry, I was jumping in my head.
The half was based on four hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars, not four, six hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not...
So it was slightly over a fifty percent deposit that we put there. Uh, the police department, um, again, salary, wages, insurance, retirement, all of that, um, was in there. Computer materials, we were able to bring that down, I think this past year, we had had some added costs for servers and things that the police department needed, um, we don't have that for this year, so we were able to bring that down. Same with our E nine-one expenses, we had about forty-eight thousand dollars in upgrades to our dispatch we needed to do, that we did this year, that we were able to bring that down this year. Uh, the same with building maintenance, we had budgeted for seventeen thousand, five hundred for a new HDHC unit of our courtroom, which was done this year, so we were able to take that cost out for this budget year. And we left thirty-nine thousand, five hundred for a new police vehicle in the police department budget. Um, again, our recommendation will be that as money allows, certainly, one to two cars every year be replaced, um, at a minimum of one car, and years that we feel we can get a second car, we're gonna try and do that.
Means you will replace a vehicle roughly once every thirteen years?
Well, it, we also utilize this capital lease purchase that comes every five years that we can make a, a big dent replacing vehicles, so one or two...
It's all caused, and it's all, if you level it out. Really, we should be replacing vehicles on a regular schedule instead of lumpy, big lump purchases, uh, this...
I think that's...
Replacement, work out a replacement schedule, and we'll see if we're working into a budget.
Is that not what the plan is? Is that what you just said?
I mean, if we were going to do a, a true outlay, uh, you'd be looking at replacing about four or five cars on, every year to replace them on a, I believe it's a six-year cycle, on the police cars, we would have to do like four cars every year, so...
But if you do it every year, instead of doing a lump sum and then this, then you have vehicles that are reliable, they are being rotated out on a regular basis, that, that's, all right, yeah, I'd like to see that, I'd like to see a three-year rolling budget, I'd like to see a five-year capital and a ten-year water sewer plan, I don't think I'm gonna get to see any of those. Okay.
Street department budget, um, so you will notice that salary and wages increased by sixteen thousand, this is due in part to a couple different reasons, one being the three percent cost of living, but we had a significant amount of turnover within our street department over the past year, year and a half, um, and we were struggling to keep people, to be honest, we were struggling to even get applicants, um, in this department, which is generally a department that we don't have enough time to fill the positions. Um, we did have to get some increases to retain some, some of the employees that we had, to keep them from moving on. Um, we went through a period, I don't know, Jay, remind me, probably four or five months, we couldn't get a candidate to apply for this town for anything, and, and we had guys who were getting ready to look, lead, so we, we had to give some retention, um, increases in pay to, to try and retain some of these employees. Um, so you will notice that change in the street department budget, if you were to just look at it as a three percent, it was gonna be more than that, but that's the reason why. Um, health insurance saw a big increase of, of seven thousand in this one, that was in part due to the eighteen point one percent increase in health, but we also had some, some new employees come in that chose different coverage levels of health insurance, which drastically changed that. And then the garbage and sanitation line item, due to the, uh, the increase that we're working on right now, we're certainly projected to see, um, increased expenses in that line item within this budget, but we're also gonna see increased revenue on the revenue side, which I don't think I noted that, my big revenue changes earlier in the general fund, but we will see the increase on revenue side as well. So IT department, this is our new budget this year within the general fund, um, we're looking, we've budgeted sixty-five thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars in expenses related to salary, wages, PICA, retirement, um, and insurance for, for the employee. As we discussed in the, in the ARP... As we discussed in the, in the A R P discussion and what voted on in the resolution, uh, we've put fifty thousand in the budget towards, um, computer-related material supplies. Um, so fifty thousand of that in this budget is A R P funded for those funds that are coming in on revenue. And we have shifted multiple departmental budgets, computer and material, um, line items over to the IT budget. Um, what we have not done this year was we, we did maintain the police department's computer and material line item within their budget, um, because they're, they're kind of a separate system and entity, and we want the new IT person to get in. We fully expect to have changes next year with regards to computer and materials, uh, but all of the utility fund, computer and materials has, has pretty much stayed over there. We wanted to shift some to general fund right now to allow the IT person to come in, get their fee. But next year, we do believe that, that we will be able to pull some more IT expenses from other budgets into this one. Um, we just didn't want to do too much crossover in the beginning until this person can decide how they would like for it to be structured moving forward. Uh, have not started on that yet. Um, certainly, I, we, we've got to ensure we get a budget passed and approved before we, we move forward with doing that.
You had an estimate, how much of this time will be allocated to water sewer, because you have the ability to transfer revenue?
We, we do.
The revenue side.
Again, I think this is a new venture that we're getting into with an IT person. We, I think we've got a lot to learn about this position over the next year, so how much time to spend general fund versus utility fund versus police department? And, and, you know, right now, we just don't know. Um, but I think we'll have a much better picture next year when we come back together. So moving on to the enterprise fund, uh, three million, three hundred twenty-one thousand one hundred dollars is for the overall budget of the utility fund. Uh, just a reminder on the angle action items for this, when we talk about the wastewater treatment plan improvement project, floating iteration for both basins will basically, basin one's done. Uh, basin two is now complete. We've actually filled it up. It's operational and we're on a temporary operating permit through D head. There's a certain amount of time that we have to operate on that before they'll issue the full permit. Um, Hit Works project is what I would say probably seventy-five percent complete at this point. The rotary filter press was installed the first part of this week. Um, the new screws and screw pumps were installed, um, about a week or two ago, and so this project is starting to, to hit downhill slope and, and uh, come to a completion, so. But with that, this fall, we'll be kicking off the liquid chemical feed project. Uh, continuing progress on the joint municipal water and sewer project, um, you know, they're, they're still, they did all the aerial survey and all the surveying for that, and, uh, they, uh, are getting into the preliminary design phase of that. Complete phase one of the infiltration and inflow improvements, so that's a part of the, uh, that's a part of the A R P budget for this year. Automated system and again, the three percent cost of living, uh, raising premium pay for utility staff. Some of the revenue changes, uh, increased water sales revenue by twelve thousand. Again, in the grand scheme of things, that's not a whole heaping lot, but just when we're talking about the bigger changes within the utility funds. Um, increased base rates by fourteen thousand based on our current revenues and projections. Uh, we did decrease sewer sales by ten thousand. Over the past two years, we've not seemed to hit those budget marks on that, so we feel that we need to bring that down some. We did increase our reg spring water sales by four thousand. Um, I do think at the end of this fiscal year, and that we're getting ready to go into, this is a line item that we're going to start having to wean off of, taper off, because they have a timeline to be on, line of solid account of water sewer authority. So that's something that, that will be likely going away in the next year, year and a half. So we're going to have to look at this one probably next year. Our water and sewer taps, um, when we look at the past three, four years of sewer taps and what they've done, we've consistently are showing that we're coming in over on our water and sewer taps, and most of that is due to new residential and commercial development that we're, that we're seeing in town. Um, so we've increased that seven thousand this year. Uh, we've done a five thousand increase for reconnect fees and ten thousand increase on to impact fees. And again, that's looking at the past two, three, four years and, and what it's done. Uh, we feel comfortable with moving that up to ten thousand.
What is the typical residential water sewer tap that someone comes in and goes?
I'm getting Jay to pull that up off the top of my head. I don't, but I need to pull that up on the website real quick.
A little under two thousand dollars?
Yeah, it seems like five seventy-one plus.
Seven twenty-five.
Yeah.
Thirteen hundred.
Probably, probably close to thirteen hundred.
So you're looking at five increase of seven is five residential. You know, business is significantly more? Mister Hendricks?
I'm pulling that.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I don't want to.
I just want to be specific with my question.
I didn't want to speak incorrectly.
While you're pulling that up, can I, alright, Jay, when you get it, just let me know.
Alright.
Um, so the non-departmental budget for the enterprise fund, um, we're all aware of the new four million dollar revenue bond that we did and refinanced the existing into it. Um, that did increase the revenue bond payment fifty-two thousand four hundred dollars. Uh, so we had to budget for that increase. And our utility reserve account, um, is reduced this year, um, to continue, so our utility maintenance, um, A, as we see the inflation that we're seeing, um, the increased costs, um, the increased fuel, I, I'm going to tell you, when I, when I say inflation increases, what it's done on the utility side for supplies and materials is unreal, unreal. I mean, hydrants have almost doubled in cost. Water pipes have almost doubled in cost. Um, it, it's crazy. The inflation has been more on our water and sewer side than what we've seen on the general fund side.
Utility reserve account?
Mm-hmm.
Definition of?
So, so that is that six hundred and twenty thousand three hundred eighty-one dollars that, that we are setting aside every year that is supposed to be the annual payment for the water project. That, that's going to be the annual payment for the water project.
And that account has how much energy is required?
I don't recall off the top of my head right now. Uh, but I can certainly get that for you. And it'll be in the, the monthly.
I have your report.
Yeah.
And so the bank account.
Um, but you know, as we, as we're dealing right now, um, I will tell you, our utility maintenance crew, I got to give some kudos to them. They've been hot on the trail this year getting a lot of things fixed. Um, unfortunately, we've had to use some professional services to help just due to the workload and quite frankly, some very complex issues that we've had to deal with over the past year. It, it becomes a conflict, a very complex issue when you're trying to replace a fire hydrant that you cannot isolate the water line. It becomes very complex. And there's times that we need to call in contractors to assist us in getting this done. Um, when we get the utility maintenance, you'll see it, but increase, you know, continuing with some funds for professional services as well as some additional funds for, for, uh, water and sewer supplies as they continue to try and get a lot of things called up and fixed and done. Uh, we've, we did, we are recommending to use some of these funds this year, and as inflation is high and fuel's high, uh, rather than looking at having to do any type of water or sewer rate increase, knowing that we're not making a, a, a payment on the water project for the next two to three years, our recommendation is just to reduce this to continue to get some of these things done and issue a budget. Nine twenty-five for a three-quarter inch water tap.
Out of town.
Out of town's one thousand three hundred sixty-nine. Were you asking about impact fees or just taps?
Impact fees or?
Five seventy-one for residential and eleven hundred and forty-three dollars for business, and that's assuming a three-quarter inch meter.
And that's, that's not a business meter?
Probably not. Most businesses will be one or two inch, at minimum one, mostly two.
That was the question, what is, because the thirteen sixty-nine, the thirteen sixty-nine, seven thousand dollar increase is five thousand.
Right, but you still got your, that was the increase. You still got your existing budget.
Yep.
So.
Big one in the middle.
Alright, one in the middle, there's one inch, one and a half, two.
One and a half.
It's three thousand eight oh seven.
Okay.
That's commercial impact. And then sewer rate for a tap in town is nine twenty-five, out of town is thirteen sixty-nine, so.
Okay. I'm sorry, I probably looked that up online too.
It's all on the way.
It's not.
It's, it's good for me to refresh my memory as well.
Alright, utility administration budget, no significant changes, um, in this budget this year. Again, any, any changes are related to the cost of living, um, the health increases and retirement increase. The water department budget highlights, um, the, the most significant thing here, chemical cost. Uh, uh, it seems like every week, we're getting a new letter from our, our chemical providers that this is going up seven percent, this is going up ten percent, um, alum's going up ten percent. It, it's just, it's getting to be a lot, so we had to throw, um, I mean, again, our best guess is fifteen thousand additional dollars in on top of what we, what we previously had, but I wish we had a clearer picture on how that inflation was going to be around. We keep hearing recession's coming, recession's coming. When, we don't know. Um, so we, we just put another fifteen thousand to, to the chemical cost in the water plant.
Are you, are you seeing a decrease in the availability of any chemicals yet?
You know, we've had a problem getting, um, chemicals. Chemicals have been fine. Uh, we, people are struggling to get water pipes and hydrants and, and supplies right now.
That's probably.
Yeah. You know, it's getting to be, it's getting to be extremely difficult to get, to get water and sewer pipes.
When, when we do a tap, we run, you have to run from main to the meter, alright? Um, and meters are going up, meter housing are going up. Do we need to look at adjusting these tap fees?
You know, that, that's a question that I, I don't know if, I, I wish I knew how long this was going to be around, or, and the other question is, are these inflation rates going to go up and then they're going to stay?
Eight, yes, they're going to stay.
Yeah, I, I don't look for a lot of stuff to come down.
I've lived through a number of these from a business standpoint, and prices do not go back down.
Yeah, I, I mean, certainly a discussion can be had about looking at our tap fees, um, just based on cost, because you're right. I mean, got a, got a email the other day from Neptune, meter's going up fifteen percent. Um, so it, it's going to cost this morning, it's going to get to a point where what we're charging, we might be breaking even. So, uh, you know, that's something we can sit down and look at and, uh, try to put together.
You do not have money.
Right, no, I disagree with you. So. Jay, can you make a note for us to look at?
Yes, sir.
Uh, wastewater department, again, chemical costs, we're look, we're looking to add ten thousand to that one. Here's another area, uh, another two areas that, that because of the, the upgrades that we've made to the wastewater treatment plant, we're not exactly sure how this is going to shake out. Uh, but we know, we are comfortable moving, um, our sewer plant repairs down ten thousand dollars, and we're comfortable moving our electrical costs down four thousand dollars. Right now, our anticipation is, is that we will be able to continue to bring those down even more. Uh, but now that we've gotten a new floating iteration in, we're getting new efficient, um, electrical panels and, and gearboxes and drives and all this stuff, um, our goal is that by next year, we can look at bringing these line items down even more. Um, but right now, that's just kind of the start to, to bringing them down in a, in a very conservative way. Uh, our wastewater plant saw the lo- largest jump in fire casualty property insurance at seventy-seven hundred dollars this year. Um, again, the appraisal was redone last year. Um, we had already had some of the improvements done. I think they saw the other improvements that we were doing. Um, and quite frankly, I just think with what the costs have become to, to fit to anything in property damage-wise on that side, um, we certainly saw a higher increase at wastewater treatment plant this year. Utility maintenance distribution, um, you will see a thirty-two thousand dollar increase to the salary and wages. There's three reasons why. One, thirty percent cost of living pay increase for employees. Two, we had to give some retention employee, uh, pay increases to some employees. We've got, for the first time in, I can tell you in the eight and a half years that we've been here, we've never struggled with keeping that department filled with employees. We've always been pretty full. We lost one, we had plenty of applications coming in. We got extremely low this past year in this department. Um, and we were looking at our heavy equipment operators leaving, and quite frankly, it's because the private sector was able to give them four more dollars an hour than what we were able to give them. Um, I'm, I'm not necessarily saying that we went through and gave people four dollar an hour raises, but we certainly had to give some raises to close that gap. We also dealt with some of the contractors that were paying to do contract work out there recruiting our employees, and hopefully that matter's been solved and won't continue to happen moving forward. Um, so, and then the last thing is, last year, we had put in the budget and it was approved to get a part-time locator on staff in the utility maintenance side. Um, due to the amount of work that those guys have, um, we are recommending this year to transition that part-time locator position into a full-time position. Um, A, so that he can continue doing the locates, but also he can be another body out there helping these guys, um, because they, they are busy all day, every day. They, they barely keep their head afloat sometimes. They could use another body out there helping them. I, I'll be honest, they probably could use a couple more guys on the utility maintenance crew. Uh, but we wanted to start this year, we could, with making that part-time position to full-time. Uh, thirty thousand, um, again, we kept thirty thousand, um, in the budget for this year to continue to have professional services for contractors to come in and help as needed as these guys are out there doing things. Um, and we are looking at an increase of eight thousand this year for water and sewer line materials just due to the increased cost that we're seeing. H-tacks, uh, we did increase the revenues up sixty thousand. I will tell you, we've always been very conservative in our revenues on the, on the.
Extremely so.
Extremely, but you know, the first year, we had an idea, we've, we've come in higher, we've closed that gap down and feel a lot more confident with what we're, what we're doing on the revenue side now. So we went up sixty thousand, and again, we budgeted six twenty-five, but we're on track this year for six hundred and forty-five thousand, I would say. Uh, we did increase the Christmas light line item back up thirty thousand for a total of fifty. That's where we previously worked, um, for Christmas lights, and we came down this past year due to doing a bunch of other engineering and design work. We're recommending to go back up on that. Uh, the part-time marketing and event coordinator, um, from a salary wages and, and employer contribution standpoint, there's thirteen thousand one hundred dollars budgeted for that. Uh, the way we've kind of got that broken down is, Jay, help remind me, make sure I say this right, we're looking at an average of ten hours a week. It's not going to be ten hours a week work. There are times where we don't necessarily have events going on, there's times that we do. They may have to be twenty hours on the week of an event that we have coming up, but they may not work some weeks. Um, we've kind of got that broken down to, to an average of ten hours a week over the course of the year. course of the year. Um, and in doing that, uh, we increased the town event line item up ten thousand dollars this year, just to give them a little bit of extra that they can do on town events as they, as they go in the planning days. Certainly, we want the, the event coordinator to, to take on the events and all the planning for all the events that we currently have, but our goal is to have them come up with some new, even if it's a one night, finding a, an acoustic person to go play on the stage at the college park or, or this or that, we want them to come up with some new ideas. Um, Sunday afternoon, like we had Cody Webb down on, on Oak Street that time for the Ridge Arms, uh, to come up with some more things like this that we can do in town, just one-day things on the weekend for people to do, so that's our, our goal and our hope for, for that person. Uh, we did budget, as discussed in the work session, a hundred thousand for town entrance signs, don't know if that's too much, don't know if that's not enough, um, but it's certainly a bargaining point, um, from the budget side, all the way out to get the bids and looking at all the locations, we want to build signs. Uh, we do have thirteen thousand dollars worth of improvements we need to do to the depot building, uh, we, we had some issues with the flooring this year that we need to get fixed, and I will be honest, that is the hottest rental facility built that we ran as a town, uh, so we need to get some flooring work done in there, and we have received some quotes on that. Um, again, Water Unity Park, it was actually budgeted this current year, we're just gonna carry that budget over, and we should be getting that, that project started here soon. And then, we didn't really budget for, outside of all the stuff that you had, we've got about two hundred and ninety-one thousand that we've just set in the H tax reserve line item for this year, um, those funds can be used at any time to come up throughout the fiscal year. If something comes up that was asked, we want to do this, we'll just come back to council, get you guys to approve that expense, and we can do a budget amendment to take it from this two ninety-one.
Excuse me, I don't have, well, Bob, you gonna run over your hands, it's up right up under that wheel.
Thank you.
What is it?
Thank you.
Left, right?
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Hey, I gotta give him the dollars, so.
Hundred and two. Go ahead, I'm sorry, Daniel.
Okay. Um, and then the American Rescue Plan, um, again, this is a, a separate fund this year, uh, total budget for this year is two million one hundred and eighty-nine thousand three hundred and eighty-four, um, that's the second allotment that should come in in October, November timeframe, and then the use of the remaining, first allocation, eight hundred and forty-one thousand four hundred and seventy-one is what we have left remaining from that. Uh, on the expense side, budgeted one point five million for the infiltration inflow improvements, four hundred and twenty-seven thousand five hundred that'll be transferred to the general fund for the IT and fire truck, and then two hundred thousand, uh, that's allocated for the second round of premium pay. That's the highlights of the budget, open for any discussion.
Actually, uh, I didn't see provisions in here to pay for training, for our zoning and planning and, uh, council for coming year.
Well, certainly the council could be taken from the training and travel council line item. Um, no, there were not, what I'd say, specific allocation of funds, you know, when I talked with Mr. Sprouts about, about doing that planning and zoning training, he did not indicate any costs related to that.
Yeah.
I, that could be something that I'm just mistaken on, but he did not indicate any, any special-
Cost for the comprehensive plan?
No, there's no cost for comprehensive plan.
They do that, um, okay. Do you call the formula for what we pay, uh, cog?
Mm-hmm, I just, I don't know the formula, we get an invoice every quarter for that.
Okay, so what's in here as a total? Thirteen hundred and something dollars for that.
Oh, I don't remember this, but you're- Is it the administration budget?
Yes, it is, but I'm just cross-checking, since, uh, we had some, um, conversation about that, uh, their budget.
Does that mean we're running here?
Yeah. I was just, I can't just sort of floor it in. By the way, by the way, council is the only, council budget got reduced.
Hmm?
Reduced council budget.
Yeah, it was probably related to municipal election expenses going away for this year.
And actually, let's hear a real calculation, a calculation, a calculation on, uh, state retirement.
A calculation on state retirement is often, why you say that?
Based on the last three months of actual payments, it should continue, um, with a what, three percent increase? No, no increase for the council. Okay, we'll discuss, we can discuss that later, alright.
Any other questions?
Motion to adjourn?
Motion so moved?
On the second.
Okay.
All in favor, right in right hand, we are adjourned.